Good evening, everyone. We want to thank you on this October the first twenty twenty four as we come together and hosting a town hall meeting. This town hall meeting is designed to help us all collectively come together and share our thoughts, ideas, and really, really dive into how we can make a real impact in our community. As has been noted, there was a recent report that was announced that in the county that most of us reside, forty percent of domestic violence cases have increased forty percent since last year. So, we got to talk about it, figure out what can we do to collaborate and make a real impact. But in Sisters for Sisters, everything we do begins with prayer. So, we are really pleased and grateful to have Reverend Tia Coulter, who will be leading us in prayer tonight as we open up for this evening's town hall meeting. Reverend Tia?
Let us clear our hearts and our minds on this evening by taking a deep breath in and blowing it out. One more time in and blowing it out. Gracious God, we thank you for everything that you have ever done, God. We thank you, Father, for being in the midst right now of this town hall meeting. Father, I ask in the name of Jesus that you continue, Lord, to be in the midst of every situation that we stand on the front lines with, Lord God, every victim, every potential victim, Lord God. We thank you, Lord God, for knowledge, and we thank you, Lord God, for trainings. And most of all, God, we thank you for your strength, Lord God, and for how sometimes we call on your peace, oh God. And we thank you most of all that because the heavens and the ears of God are attentive to our prayers, that he hears us for every cry that we have. We thank you, Lord God, that we are not in this battle alone, that together, Lord God, we can do many. With one, we could do some. We thank you, Lord God, not just for numbers, but if we reach that one, Father God, we save that one, oh God. We have done our assignment for that day. God, we thank you, Lord God, for giving us the mantle, Lord God, and for giving us the assignments because we know that these assignments are not for everyone, and they are not for the frigid of heart. But we thank you, Lord God, that we are soldiers fighting in this war, and that you have given us weapons, not just with the word and our testimony, oh God, but with your strength and your power that stands beside underneath and pushes us to the forefront. So, as we have this town hall on today, God, let the knowledge, Lord God, sink into everyone's heart, not just their head. Let us speak from our hearts, oh God, that someone listening, Lord God, may reach out to any organization and any person that is on this line today, asking for help. And by your stripes, oh God, not only will we help them to become healed, but you will continue to give us the resources, oh God, to help them. In Jesus' name, we thank you for every organization and every woman represented. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Man, I feel I could keep running, running on. Oh, thank you so much, Reverend Tia Coulter, who's also the Director of the Love Movement, Leave Our Violence Every Day. Tonight, I just hope and pray that we all can really connect. And I think Tia says something about her heart. It's a hard work. This is not something they could pay anybody enough money to do. I'd like to, as we prepare to get started, share the vision of the Love Movement from Sisters for Sisters. One more. Thank you.
Every nine seconds, a woman is assaulted, while COVID nineteen has dramatically increased the incidence of domestic violence in the home. Join Sisters for Sisters Inc.'s Love Movement this October as we observe National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. For over twenty years, we have made an impact in domestic violence through education, prevention, awareness, and direct services. To learn more and become a love ambassador, please visit our website at www.sistersforsisters.org. And remember, love doesn't hurt.
Amen. Love doesn't hurt. For those that are joining us again this evening, we welcome. If you're on Facebook Live, you can come on in and be a part of the conversation. The goal for tonight is to really, like I said, collectively connect, come together, and come up with some solutions. As noted, during Purple Nights, Lights Night last week, thank you to the Office of the Share for hosting this annual event. There was a conversation pertaining to the number and the increase in domestic violence incidents in Prince George's County. And this is reflective in other areas around the country as well, but the number was forty percent, which is quite a lot. So, we want to get into that conversation and figure out what we can do to make an impact. What can we do to resolve some of these things? And for domestic violence advocates that are on, I would like for you, if you can, in the chat, to share all your information, your name of your organization, your phone number, and contact, other contact information. If you can share this in the chat, and we're going to share that with everyone who registered. I see a lot of folks are on, but their images aren't showing, but I want to thank you for being on. We are on Facebook Live, and we will be sharing this on YouTube. So, Sister Tia, I love the way you have facilitated all of the love talk conversations this evening. Thank you. And I'd like for you and anyone, Sister Lisa, and all of you that are on. Is that Sister Mary? Y'all know my site. Sister Mary, always so supportive, and those that are on the side. Let us talk about where are we right now as a community? As you all know, it was recorded or reported yesterday that the husband and wife, I think it was in Fredericksburg or Frederick, were killed by the former husband or partner, and the children were hiding in the closet. And the mother, who was nursing her baby right here in the area, C Pleasant, Prince George's County area, who was killed by her intimate partner, her ex, while she was nursing her baby, one of her twins. These are all just recent incidents, and there are so many more. I'm sure Queen has a case that she's brought to light, and many of you, Tia, you're hearing cases. And I'm sure Lisa, you're hearing, we're hearing all these cases and the increase in the violence. And my question is, why are we not hearing about this in the media? Can somebody help me? I mean, it's not, it's not promoted as well. What are your thoughts, Angela?
Well, I'll start. To be honest, Sister Carolyn, it is actually being reported. I think the biggest case right now that the world is interested in is Puff Daddy, P Diddy, whatever we call him these days. That's the biggest domestic violence. You would think that's the only thing that's going on, when it's not. You know, only because he's a quote-unquote celebrity is anyone paying notice to it. Of course, when Bill Cosby got locked up, R. Kelly. But, you know, did they talk about it when the Playboy Mansion was being raided? Did they talk about the other Caucasian individuals? I mean, we got a whole sex offender running for president. Let's talk about that. Okay? And he's been charged with thirty-four felons, and one of them was a sexual assault. So, you know, it's just the wrong people are, are making note something that it is important. But that is the only important thing that's going on in the world. This is October Domestic Violence Month. Let's, let's talk about, is it really being talked about in the church? Carolyn, I know you have something going on where a certain Sunday will be, you know, that we want the people of the church to talk about it, but it should be talked about every Sunday or at least once a month. But we, we don't even have pastors making sure that it's a part of ministry. I won't say all, because there are some churches in the Metropolitan DMV area, but it's, it's a handful. You know, why aren't we talking about it in school? They're teaching our children how to put on condoms. How come they're not teaching our children healthy relationships and boundaries and, and no means no? So, I'll, I'll leave it there, but no, I agree with you. It is not being talked about enough. And it's only a headline when it's a celebrity that it's being talked about.
Ladies, what are your thoughts? Lisa, Mary, Tia, any others that are on?
I agree with April wholeheartedly, but I also would like to add that it is being talked about. We are seeing it in the media. We are seeing it on social media outlets. But the question I would have is, are people really paying attention? And one of the reasons why I think, or I believe that people don't pay attention is because we need to focus on the educational piece of domestic violence. We need to focus on our unconscious addictions to domestic violence. Some of us are raised in domestic violence households where we are in fact taught that we are not victims of domestic violence because mom and dad are, you know, arguing and they're getting into physical altercations. And sometimes ourselves as victims, we don't believe that our children are victims because the child has not been harmed, the child has not been touched, the child has not been spoken to in, in, in such a, you know, a demeaning manner. However, we all know, everyone in these Hollywood squares here, that that is far from the truth. But honestly, I just think that people are not paying attention. And we have to do better with coming to the forefront, with making our voices heard. And also, not for any of us here, but making certain that we're keeping this discussion going outside of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We all know that domestic violence exists, but what are we doing about it? And so, I, I would say that the more that we educate, the more that we use our voices, the more that folk will, you know, pay attention.
I agree with you.
Tia, Mary?
I agree with both. I agree with both. I think that it is being talked about. I don't think that the churches aren't doing enough. I think that the churches are still looking at domestic violence as a taboo. Most, I'll say ninety percent of churches. I don't believe that there are a lot of churches that I probably can count on one hand how many churches in this area have a domestic violence ministry, whereas they're doing education, they're talking about it. I know First Baptist Church is doing, Glendale is doing a great job. Like, they have their weekly check-ins, and they're doing that, and that's wonderful. I think that's, that's needed. But how are you meeting the needs of the community when you're not even willing to talk about the needs of the community? Because this is a, the education is the need. Churches are not educated. And a lot of pastors who are male will talk, will, will say something about it, but they don't want to really be educated about it. They don't, because they'll use, you know, as we know, they will use religion and scripture sometimes as men, certain men, to oppress women, which is, which is abuse, right? And so, we, we have to get churches more involved. We really do. We have to, you know, I don't know if that's going to churches, asking if we can talk to the congregation for, you know, I won't say thirty, give, give it fifteen minutes. Fifteen minutes is, is a lot of time to just like, to get your point across, right? And then have a table outside and, or wherever they are in their churches, just in case people have questions. But I believe that the churches need to do more.
I agree. I agree. Mary, anyone else? Mary, would you like to share anything in particular in terms of how to get this word out?
Well, I don't know whether or not, if you see something or somebody is doing something, you know it's domestic violence, just like the other day here in my apartment building. The guy lives here, but his girlfriend comes by, and they was having an argument, and seeing that the girlfriend was tackling him. And so, you know, I was trying to think, should I say something? Should I say something? But I didn't because I didn't want to get involved. And, and I don't know whether I should have said something, you know? It was that he was being attacked, not her. So, I, I just wonder, you know, what could I have done, or should I, what should I have done?
I have been in that position, and I have called the police. I, I called the police. They won't know that it's you. They're not coming to your door. They're not, your neighbors won't know. But I called the police for domestic disturbance.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was wondering, because, you know, he just kept moving away from me and jumping his car, and then she tried to run into his car with her car. And I'm like, what do I do? That's a good idea. I have to keep that in mind. Call the police.
You can, and you have to give your name. You know, they'll ask you. If you want to give your name, you can say, no, I don't. But I want you to come and check out apartments, so and so and so, and be for domestic disturbance.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Right. It definitely is in a situation where you want to step in on your own. But like Reverend Tia said, you can call the police. I've done it several times. I've been in a situation where I live too, where it's just an automatic trigger for me, especially with the, the heinous way my, my sister was murdered. But you don't have to give your name. You don't have to, just say there's a domestic disturbance, disturbance, and you're fearful, you don't know what may happen. If you're comfortable, maybe you could pull him to the side, you know, later on, and maybe say something. Or, or not. But you know, you, you just have to, you just have to gauge, you have to gauge.
Okay. There's times, I, I, there was a young man that was, that I actually stopped. And I was like, listen, dude, you can't do that. You can't, you can't hit that girl like that. And he was talking to me. I was like, I don't care. I said, I, I get it. Whatever it is she did, she made you angry, but that's just not the way to handle it. I was like, you got to think about, you, you got to think about your kids. You got to think about your daughter that's in there. You got to think about now the police are coming, your good government job that you got. You have to think about all of that before you raise your hand. Because you have something to lose. You need to figure out, are you, with your emotions, you, you have to, that's the only way you know how to deal and handle with it. Now, with the apartment that I lived in, like, I think for me, it's the last, every person that moved into that apartment building, there was domestic violence for some reason. In that one apartment, after was three couples. And I was like, and I said, oh, the last, I was like, okay, I can't, I had a panic attack. And I said, this has got to stop right now. It's got to stop. So, no, call, 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 every time, call. Because eventually, they're going, they're going like, listen, I need to cut, we need to cut this out. You either going to stop dealing with her, she going to stop dealing with you. But if you call the police enough, somebody going to stop dealing with somebody. You know?
Okay. All right. I'll keep that in mind.
That's good advice. I just want to ask someone that's tuning in. I hear the volume on your background noise. If you all can please mute out or turn down your volume. Thank you so very much. I appreciate it. You, we are giving some nuggets, hopefully that will save lives and raise up this, amplify this domestic violence message. As we move forward, that, that's some good advice here. Yes.
Hi, this is Maggie, and how's everybody doing? I just want to add that I think education is the key. I'm listening to Mary, and Mary's an intelligent woman, but she did not know that she could call the police anonymously, and a lot of people don't. So, I think educations and training, even with something like that, is necessary. I've also watched shows where one young lady did not know what the signs of domestic violence are in twenty twenty-four. So, there needs to be more education and training done by people in various organizations, in the schools, in the churches, as you all have seen. And just holding even special training sessions throughout the year, every three months, you know, something like that. But education is key. We always know education is power. I think education is also the key in this instance about things that you would think that, you know, everybody would know, but they don't.
I agree with Sister Maggie. Education is, is absolutely key. There was a time when I used to go into the school systems without their sister Queen Afee, who just lost someone very closely to her from domestic violence. And I, my heart just goes out to Queen right now during this trying time. Her, her daughter, who lost her life to domestic violence, her daughter's best, her daughter's best friend was just murdered by his wife a few weeks ago, and the funeral was, I believe, on yesterday. When we talk about the churches, education is key. Because as Christians, we, 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 we operate from a place of forgiveness. So, oftentimes, when we're talking about discussing or even having forums within the churches, we, we're always, we always talk about, you know, talk about the forgiveness piece. But in order for us to be effective in the churches and to have these type of settings and domestic violence programs within the churches, pastors have to be trained, laypeople have to be trained. We just can't go in once a year, every Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and say, hey, we're putting on purple, or we're wearing a ribbon, or we want to make light of domestic violence. But it has to be training. And just as Maggie said, in the school systems, by the time Queen and I and others who are a part of domestic violence, where's many tags family? By the time we got to the high schoolers, honestly, I want to say it was too late. We have to be reaching our children in elementary school. My daughter was assaulted in elementary school when I think she was in fifth grade, and she didn't even know some of the words the young boy was using. By the time we get to middle school, I, I'm not, I don't want to say it's too late because we can always transform through education. But by the time high school comes, you can pretty much honestly hang it up. The children have their minds made up. They're seeing what, you know, take place in their house, you know, in their homes. The girls, I must admit, are way worse than the boys. We've seen cases like that. But we have to operate out of a place of not just making people aware of domestic violence. It has to be education, education, education.
I agree with Lisa. You know, knowledge is power. And until we can educate the community, whether it be the churches, whether it be school, until everyone knows exactly what domestic violence is, or spouse abuse, or whatever society is calling it these days, it's domestic violence. And anytime you put your hands on someone and it's not in love, do you have no business touching, hurting someone? Anytime you are not speaking in love and you're calling someone out of their name, that's verbal abuse. When you're married, no means no. That is called rape. And so, until we start educating the society on the different forms of abuse, because everyone thinks it's just physical. It is not. There is cyber bullying. There is financial abuse. There is sexual abuse. There is verbal abuse. There is bullying in school is abuse. Y'all, we thought it was cute in elementary school, in the second grade, when he was pulling our hair. Or, you remember, they would tie our shoelaces together, and, and we trip up. We forget that. We thought it was cute. These high school teenagers think it's cute when he's calling you fifteen times a day and taking your phone and won't let you go see your, your best friend, or making you stay home, or, you know, telling you, if you love me, you'll do this, that, these, and those. We are not educating our household, number one, our families. We have to start in the home. And then what are we doing for the abuser? Okay, so the victim is getting out, but then the abuser is attaching himself or herself to somebody else. There, how many programs are out here to help the abuser so that they don't go into another cycle abusing the next person? So, we get one out, and then somebody else is coming in. So, we, we talk about getting out. We talk about counseling. We talk about forgiving. But then what are we doing for the abuser? If it ha, that's the way, that's when it stops, when we get the abuser some help. Not saying go back with him. I'm saying, when we get these protective orders, and we go to court, if we go, let's talk about that at some point. I, for me, I didn't ask for jail time. I asked for mandatory counseling, not just a eight-hour anger management. I requested that he get into counseling to help his whatever, whether it be bipolar, whether it be a mental condition, whether it be whatever the situation is. We have to get to the root of why somebody is X, Y, Z, beating, hitting, slapping, cussing, whatever the, the abuse is, we have to get to the root. And until we can get to the root, and, and I agree, it has to start at elementary school. We have to catch these children because they're seeing it at home. So, they think this is normal. They thinking punching and hollering and screaming is normal. We're not teaching them about triggers. We're not teaching about healthy relationships. We don't teach them what boundaries are. And so, I agree with all the ladies. We have to start educating the community. Let's put it on a, 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 a poster board. Let's put it on the buses. You know, if we got Cardi B or, or, or somebody like that, that would talk about domestic violence, then these young folks will listen. They listening now because it's P Diddy. But all we're talking about is what he did. We're not talking about why he did. We're not talking about the consequences of holding the man accountable. We're just saying what he did. Now that it's up to a hundred and some odd people he's assaulted. It, it could be more, but we're not, how many of the news people are saying when this started, why it started? About getting this man some help? No, the talk now is getting him out on bail. But it's just so much more we as a community can do. And, and yes, the eleven on the line, we're doing it. We're doing it, but we're doing it in our community. But what about the other fifty states? But for us in Maryland, DC, Baltimore, and Virginia, I believe we are on point. Sister Carolyn has been doing this twenty-plus years. If we put down collectively how many people we have helped and the lives we have saved, it is a blessing from God that each one of us are on this line to be able to talk about domestic violence. It is the grace of God that we can even share our story, whether it happened to us personally or it happened to one of our loved ones. God placed that painful purpose in us. So, I thank God for Carolyn Washington, who is on the frontline and not just talking about it. She's doing something. She's doing. We all are doing something. So, I commend you ladies for doing what you're doing. Keep doing it. Keep talking about it. Mary, when you see that young man again, use discernment. If you can. If you can chat with him, tell him about Carolyn's talk that she's getting ready to do with the men. Maybe if he just knows that there's other men dealing with what he's dealing with, he won't be so ashamed to talk about it, because that's the problem with the men. You think they're not going through domestic violence? Yes, they are, but they too ashamed because they men to talk about it. It's more men now, but we just don't know about it. We just don't know about it. Men are being raped by other men and women. It goes on in the workplace, more so, I've heard more men talk about their boss hitting on them and sexual assault, but they won't talk about it because they're men. So I think we should keep doing what we're doing, holding these types of forums, not just in October, but Carolyn does it all the time. It might be quarterly, she's on social media live talking about it. So it's not because we, the eleven who's on this line, are not doing it, but the more we talk about it, the more we tell somebody else, somebody else will tell somebody else, somebody else will tell somebody else. Let's invite to to Carolyn's events, to Lisa's events, to anybody who's having an event, post it. We don't know, if one person might see it, and you have saved an entire generation. An entire generation. We gotta break these strongholds and break these generational curses.
The way the way we break stigmas is um, we have to be open, we have to be transparent. Um, and then the stigmas can be broken. Um, and especially for our men, um, you know, men are taught very or early on. Um, you don't cry, if you cry, you're a sucker, if you cry, you're punk, if you cry, you're not a man. And um we all all know that women, um, seven men are um abused. But that's just what statistics show us. Imagine how those numbers would look if more people came forward, if more men came forward. And if we broke down those barriers and those stigmas, you know, when you go to another brother or sister and you say, hey, man, you're crazy, like, why are you letting, you know, that person do that to you, or you shouldn't be letting them do that to you? So they get laughed in their face, and they get teased, and they get taunted. But the way we, the way we educate is through um open openness and transparency. The way that we break the stigmas is through openness and transparency. The way we, the way we continue on with this journey is through um us sticking together in unison, um, us not being in competition with one another. Us not being mad because I didn't buy a ticket to your event or your workshop. Us, you know, um, thinking, okay, well, I'm doing this, so why are they doing it? You know, they're doing it because they saw that I posted it first, or I said it first. So honestly, I'm here to to just make a clarion call to each of us, especially those who aren't on the line. They say, for me, this is personal. I think we all know that, this is so personal for me, it's beyond personal. And the one thing that I want back, I can never get back, ever get back. But the only way that we can begin to work to eradicate domestic violence is by us sticking together. We have to come together collectively. And Dr. White Washington is 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 always talking to us about that. Coming together collectively, being on one accord, being, you know, uniting together because when we look at it honestly, God called each of us to play a part in someone else's lives. He has already predestined the lives that we are going to change and transform through sharing our testimonies and our stories. So there's no need for a competition, there's no need for us not to stick together. We're better when we're in this thing together. Um, we should all be, you know, having open arms and coming together in these type of forums and platforms and in panels to to see, you know, what it is that we can do to to make our communities a better place, to make a safer place for our children, for our men, for our women, our boys and our girls, and ultimately for for our world, the world that we live in. But we can only do it when, if we do it together.
Absolutely, I'm giving you a standing ovation. All of you have shared such light. Um, are there any comments in the chat?
There is a comment on Facebook. Um, Levon Reedie Thomas is asking, is stating and asking a question. The statement is, the county government has um used to have a robust DVD effect with the faith-based community during the Baker administration. Is it no longer happening? Who would like to answer that question?
See, I think you can answer it probably better than most, cause you're invited to those meetings. I mean, I'm not, you know, Lisa said something that was so critical. Lisa broke it all the way down. We are not here to compare or compete, ladies, we're not. We are here to complement, collaborate, connect, to change the conversation about domestic violence twenty-four seven. Everybody that I see on this timeline, you know, look, y'all, I gotta use my camera, take a picture make it big to see it, but they are doing this work beyond October. Every one of them is some that are not listed. So we're doing this all almost every day. Every day. We're talking about new cases, we're asking for solutions, support, almost on a weekly basis, on a regular basis. So we're not here to compete. This is not the Olympics, this is the real life of women and families and men who are suffering in silence. And we together are the ones that can, we're the change agents. So I'm glad for everything that's been said. Sister Tia, would you like to address the question about the domestic violence initiatives that's going on right now?
So I can, I can only, I, what I can say is that I but I don't believe that it's as strong as it was in the Baker administration. I think that they are doing the bare minimum. I'm just being honest, can I just be honest? Um, I think the thing that that can the county do more, of course. Um, but who are they gonna listen to? The people that they will probably listen to are 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 not us for some strange reason, and I'm just being honest. I don't know what to say about that, I really don't. I I think that we are the voices that they should listen to. I think that I believe when we call, they should answer. Um, I think that we have the ideas, not just the ideas, we have the ideas, we have the knowledge, we have the temperament, we have everything, the skills to actually help them help combat what's going on in the county. Um, but they have to be open to it. And it has to be a priority. And I don't think that domestic violence is a priority in the county. And that's just my take.
I think that we need to bring it probably to, um, you know, Miss, Miss uh Brave Boy, we need to bring it to, um, Miss Angelo, who's running for senate. I think we need to put it in front of them and and ask them the hard questions so that we can put it in front of our powers-to-be, because those are the ones who are gonna make the changes. I think the best sheriff we had, who was really on our side, was Sheriff Michael Jackson back in the day. He had a whole task force in PG County. I'm I'm not sure if that task force is still in place, because I no longer live in PG County. But he he had trained those officers during that time um, to come out when a domestic violence or dispute was called. It was a task force that was trained so that they could, a woman would go talk to the woman, and then someone would talk to the man, because a lot of times, by the time the police would get there, you know, they had made up, or she was too afraid to say there was a problem. So no charges were pressed, no restraining order was given. But that's because the police officers didn't wanna get involved, because it was a domestic dispute. And then how many died because the police officer didn't wanna get involved? So when we talk about training, where's the training on the police force? That they are, can handle a domestic violence or a domestic dispute. When you see him or her bleeding profusely, but she says, I fell down the steps. What it, what are they doing? They're leaving because she said, I fell down the steps, and they know beyond a shadow of a doubt, that that woman or that man did not fall down the steps. But because she or he said, they didn't hit me, then they have to leave. So we have to educate the police department, we have to get our senators and our de- uh and our defense attorneys and our whoever it is that can make these changes. If they're not on board and we're not putting petitions in front of them, we're not putting bills in front of them, and we're not marching like Dr. King did and our ancestors who fought, bled and died so that we can vote. If we're not putting this stuff on the bill, how is anything gonna change? I- 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 it's not just us talking about it, because we physically can't change the law. We gotta get these laws changed. And and that's not, that's what's not happening. And I haven't heard, I love her, I love her to pieces. I haven't heard too much of 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 uh Vice President Harris talking about it. I've heard her mention it a couple times, but if we don't get it in front of the President of the United States and our new senator or sentenced to be and our state's attorney, then how are we gonna make these changes? How our law is gonna be passed if we don't get it in front of them? How how do we do it?
Yeah, I believe that Sheriff Carr, I I believe that this new sheriff is, I think he's a little bit more, I think he's he's all in when it comes to domestic violence. Um, but I'll just go back to priorities. It has to be a priority, it is a priority for us. So how do we make it a pri- how do we make it a priority for them? Like you said, marching, banging on the doors, sending, you know, sending emails, and not just like one, but just flooding their emails. Going to their offices to talk about it. Yeah, doing a march, do- doing a march, the march is, I'm just quite sure it will be fine. Um, that could happen, all those things, all those things can happen, we just have to do it. So like you said, coming on and coming in line, Carolyn bringing us together. So now we've talked about it, and we've talked about it, and we talked about it. So now, I believe the next step is form a, like, form a committee, like committees to do. One committee is gonna knock on the sheriff's door, one committee is gonna help write letters. But we just have to kinda strategize how we're going to do this. I believe, I I totally one thousand percent agree with you about policies, bills and laws. Um, that if we don't educate ourselves on policies, bills and laws, that nothing is going to change. Because those, those are the ways that, those are the other, the really good ways for us to make changes.
Yeah, I agree with um Reverend Tia.
My sister called this Tia.
Listen, listen, you know me, you know me. I for a fact have um been um honored to sit on the panel with Sheriff Carr. And I know that he is very passionate when it comes to um domestic violence. Um, I know that wholeheartedly, he really is very passionate. But one of the ways that we can all get involved is if we wanna see changes, Sheriff Carr is always looking for you to call on the phone and say, hey, how can my organization partner with PG County? And um, I am, um, my work comes out of Washington DC, but is getting ready to be switched over to um Prince George's County. Because in DC, honestly, we don't have as nearly as many programs as you all have in um Prince George's County. I'll just be honest. So um I have reached out to Sheriff Carr's office just to see how I can get involved. I know several other domestic violence advocates who are um, who are involved with um Prince, with the Prince George's County um, Office of the Sheriff, um, and who's making a change and who's walking out there on the front line with Sheriff Carr and um his officers every single day of the week, twenty-four seven. So um if we want something done, then guess what, we have to do it, right? If we want something done, then guess what, we have to demand it, we have to command it, not demand it, we have to command it. If we want something done, if we want laws changed, then we have to be out there on the front lines and we have to be in Annapolis or wherever on front of the court buildings, like you said, with our signs, with our posters, with our stories. And we have to command change, we have to command for people to listen to us. We have to command that people take us seriously. We can't just be on a, on a Zoom call or in a meeting or in a forum and saying, hey, this is what we want. We have to fight for what it is that we want. The way that we make change is that we make the change happen. That that's the only way that it's gonna happen, honestly. Laws can be changed, um, laws can be passed. I'm a, I am a witness that it can happen. I've used my sister's story to have laws changed within the the US Senate and other places. We have to use our voices. Oftentimes, we, we say that we are advocates or we are activists, but we refuse to use our voices. Listen, I know that God gave me this big mouthful of reason. So have to command and work for what we want. It could be done, um, and it we could be done. And I'm 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 like you all, I have spent numerous occasions on the domestic violence events, the summits, the this and that. And then every year, and including this year, I'll tell you, I think this year I was so highly disappointed. Because I'm like, okay, we have the money, where's the money going, what are we doing? We come together every single year, two or three times a year for these panels and for these symposiums and for these events, and it's the same thing, and it just feels like it's so rushed. We have to command what it is that we want and what we wanna see. No, you're not gonna just have this and give us some purple ribbons and some Panero sandwiches and some juice and some water, and the same thing year after year. No, this is what we want. Who who else better to do it than us?
And Carolyn, you posted something Sunday, and I put it on my timeline as well. Can you imagine if the NFL would allow the purple ribbon like they do? And and bless their hearts for for doing the pink in October. But if they switched it up and added the purple ribbon and actually said what that purple ribbon was for, started wearing purple socks and helmets, then we would start getting some national publicity about domestic violence awareness. And so I posted it, I sent it to everybody in my contact list to sign the petition. People didn't even know that it was like, well, what's the purple for? I was like, Lord have mercy, they don't even know that the purple ribbon stands for domestic violence. Everybody knows what pink is, everybody knows. And so just me sending out that link got a lot of buzz. And so I I pray to to God that we're able to pass that because of the, I mean, it is boatloads of people around the world watching football every Sunday, Monday and Thursday night. Can you imagine if we get a purple ribbon and they start understanding what that purple ribbon means? That that's what we gotta get out there and put in front of. I don't know, stand at the subway and get people to sign this thing so this can happen. That's one way of getting in front of it. We gotta get in front of it, and Lisa, I agree with you. We gotta get in front of it. And Lisa, I agree with you. We have got to do more than just sit on a panel, have a brunch, breakfast. Or and it cuz it, the mess of hours is twenty-four hours, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It is not just the month of October from October first to October thirty-first. It's going on right now somewhere. We know it. So let's continue to to put these petitions and and get it like, talk, talk to Governor, the Governor. I haven't even heard him talk too much about it. And he's our new, he's he's our, he's our African American face, but I haven't, I haven't heard him say much about, you know, what he's doing. I didn't see him paint the the town purple.
Let me tell you the reason why you all haven't seen or heard of a lot of the activity. Is because they're waiting on you. They're waiting to hear from you. They're waiting to hear from us. They're waiting for us to collectively reach out to them. And I have to apologize to all of you on behalf of the First Lady of the State of Maryland. Tia already knows and I got another message from someone else. She's waiting on me to call her. And I'm waiting to be a hundred percent healthy so I can be fabulous, glamorous and myself. That's so. But if you all have to go and we set it up, then we'll go. We have another very high level meeting at the highest level um that's waiting on me. So it's now time for us to connect. So you all can go before me.
You don't gotta wait.
No, well, you know what I'm saying. Well, you all know I'm I'm wobbling. I got Camille as my little, you know, balancing act. But there are so many conversations of people that's waiting to hear from us. If we were to reach out to the Governor Wes Moore collectively, it gives us more power. And if we go there and raise awareness that, hey, we need, he will have buildings in purple before you know it. It's a lot of things going on you all right now and they need us. You all are on an assignment in this hour and your voices, Lisa said voice, 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 I heard that. When we come together, that million dollar grant will be right here. And we can do all the things. We can have the buildings. We can do the work that we really need to do and have a desire to do. I'm so proud to serve alongside you all. Many of the things that we do could not have happened without many of you and some others that are not on tonight. But I know together we can make the difference, but we have to get our voice out there. A lot of activities coming up this month and for those that are joining us. And I wanted to say this about in um for the Vice President um and President to be. She actually is a strong, strong champion for the Violence Against Women Act. Major.
Absolutely, absolutely.
She was a domestic violence, sexual assault prosecutor for, I mean, she's on that. She and Angela, that's their, that's their sweet spot. That's their tender spot. So we're gonna, I can't even tell y'all the places we will go. I see it and it's huge. It is the White House. I'm just gonna put it out there. It is. I see it. But the thing is, we just have to come together and stop fighting and competing and comparing. With one another. We cannot afford that. We have to go, all of us with our names on the letter to Sheriff Carr. Or to the Prince George's Police um Chief. And they will be, they will stand up and listen because we represent a vote. We represent a village. They will listen if we come on one accord singing our part. We can't have everybody sing a soprano and alto. We have to be in unity and everybody brings something special and a beautiful sound to the whole conversation. We are all needed to make this thing be be in harmony, to be in harmony. And I think we can do it. I have so much confidence. I see what you all are doing individually and it's phenomenal. It's outstanding. But if we came together more often and supporting one another. Even if it's like, I see you, girl, you doing it. April, I love it when you have your wonderful talks every month. Queen Afi has her talks, Lisa's doing her thing, Tia's meeting with people after church service. And many of you are doing so many things. Leanne, she's feeding and she's loving. And all of you, I can't see your names right now. You're doing some great things and I love it. And we see you. I wish I could write a check for all the times I wanna help out, but in this season, I can't write a check, but I can send a prayer. And ask God to open up a door or a window. And Lord knows he's doing just that. I guess my question is, Tia, you came with a major, some major uh great ideas and thoughts about what's next. This month, we have lots of things going on. I would like to ask everyone if you had any event or activity. Please put it in the chat or send it to me and we're gonna put it on our website. Um, so many great activities going on. And for the NFL, we did that ten years ago. And we got nine thousand signatures. Now we're doing it again and I'm expecting a lot more. So if you all have any young people that know how to do the YouTube, the Instagram, the TikTok. And all that stuff, we're gonna do many videos and try to get this awareness out. Because studies have shown that during football season. That's when the incidence of domestic intimate partner violence increases during this season. So we have to be on it. I want the NFL to even put out a commercial during the season. To say, you know, get everybody on point. You know, don't touch your women, don't hurt your women, your women. Because that aggressive, you know, hormone inside of you is, you know, coming up and your team didn't win. We want to have everybody that has an event posted. We're gonna post it on our website. We have a website called Silent Tears. No More and we have the Love Movement. Of course, we have Sisters for Sisters. But I wanted to explain quickly about the vision and what God has shown me in the last month. Um, and I've just been fasting and praying, but we are celebrating our nineteenth year for our Silent Tears No More Prayer Breakfast. At Martin's Cross Winds in Greenville. Loved it, was excited, got everybody psyched up. But more and more murders or suicides, murder suicides, I was hearing revolving around intimate partner domestic violence. I realized something had to change. We had to do something different. And so with that said, with the energy we were putting toward the annual prayer breakfast. We're putting towards several other outreach activities. And one new one in particular is Sister Shop Talk. And I'll talk to you all about that later. I'll email you all. But we're going after the women and the men who are being abused. We're going where they are. Because they're not coming to Martin's Cross Winds and have a nice brunch. We're gonna be talking to the same old people over and over and over again. Recycle. We need to go get the people, you know? We gotta get them. They're gonna be at the head salon getting their braids done for five hours. So we can give them something to read so they can identify and find resources. We're gonna do it for domestic violence and breast cancer awareness. Along with that, the men that go in the barber shop. You know, a lot of them are being abused. Queen has been saying it forever. That's not my niche, but it's happening. So we wanna give them something as well. What that looks like for them, I'm not sure. The women, I've got their product. But this month, we're pushing the messaging. We're pushing the messaging. Um, we're gonna be going to Shepherd's Cove and we're doing domestic violence and financial literacy cuz that's where they are. A lot of them are there because they have been abused. So because they're not going to Martin's. We used to get them from the different show because they're not going there. We can't just forget where they are. We can't just pretend they're already in it. So we gotta help find support systems to help them out. And there's so many, the Handbags of Hope, we're doing that and so many other things. And you all can be involved. And when I say you can be involved, we can collaborate. We'll put your in Sisters for Sisters Handbags of Hope across America. But you can have your own piece on there. We'll do a flyer with your own logo, your own name and email and contact information. That's so important because we all need to be um not recognized, but people need to know, hey. They're doing this. Oh, this is great. You know, maybe I can work with them on a project. Because a lot of these co- uh companies, corporations and things, they're looking for someone they can work with, but they don't know who. Now, getting back to the churches, that's a whole nother conversation. I wanna challenge everybody to go to your pastor, your church, your ministry leader, your missionary society, your women's auxiliary. And ask them, can we talk about domestic violence in the month of October? That doesn't cost anybody a ticket. You don't have to go buy a dress, but we do need to talk about it in the church. And we need to go to the powers, those people that run these various groups um in the church. And ask, can we talk about this? Maybe not the second Sunday, but one Sunday in October, please sir, madam. That's where we start. One voice, one voice at a time. And there's so many others, but I want you all to um also put your organizations in the chat. Um, Tia, if you can help me with that. And then I wanna make sure, see if you all have your events, put your events there. Um, but does anybody have any ideas on how we can make this conversation a better place, a better outcome? Uh, and enhance the quality of life and living. Does anybody have any hotels or any places? That we can maybe get a good contractor, get some of these churches, since you all don't have a program. Can you take some money and put in this hotel? And so when we have a woman escaping, we'll just shoe them in that direction or a family, a gentleman. So you 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 don't wanna give us the money? No. Look, just can you put it over in this particular space? And that will be our safe space. Any ideas you all have because the calls are on the way. It's about to get real heavy. I'm feeling it. If you haven't started getting a lot of calls, you will certainly soon. So what are your thoughts on that? Anybody have any ideas on what we can control?
I agree with you, Carol. I think we should all write our um secretaries of our churches. Cuz it's thirteen people on the line. I'm sure thirteen of us go to church. If we could write and and request um that our pastor or uh whomever makes that decision. One, can we talk about domestic violence in October and beyond? And then secondly, you know, can we, like uh uh Carolyn said, can we put? Monies towards a certain hotel so that when we get these calls, and I'm like Carolyn, I get one at least once a week. Because a person needs to get out, but they don't have a safe haven to go to. You know, my prayer is that, you know, we get more than one transitional house open. So that when we get that phone call, we can say, hey, do this intake and we have a empty bed. We know that there's one shelter for domestic violence in PG County and it's always full. And so we need more safe havens or safe houses for the women, the children. Because the women can't even go to a shelter if they have a son. Because a lot of the shelters won't take males regardless of age. So somehow we have to get the money so that we can say, hey, we have somewhere for you to go. We have the money to give them gas to get there or Uber. And so and that's the major problem is that we don't have the funding. You know, a person, you can say, well, I'll pray for you. Well, Lord have mercy, these men and women who are trying to escape, they they need prayer, yes. But they need funding in order to get to the next de- destination. And a lot of women and men are staying because they don't have nowhere to go. And once that hotel room two or three nights is over, they they don't have a family member to go to. Because the family members don't wanna help, don't wanna get involved. And so we need the money, we need the funds in order to 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 house. These women and men. And then you don't, you say for instance, we have a transitional house for women. Well, we can't put the men over there and there because it's a trigger for the women. So we're gonna need a whole nother space for the man who is being abused. Because nine times out of ten, he's not talking about it. He's not telling his homeboy, well, she kicking my butt. Or she's putting me in a cage. They not telling nobody that, but it's happening. It's happening. And so Carolyn, I agree with you. Can we put letters together to our churches? You know, especially our mega churches that we know they have the money. Can they put a certain amount aside to say, a- again, they don't have to physically put it in our hand. But can you, can you donate to the Holiday Inn? And then this money is already in place. So when we call the Holiday Inn, hey, I had, we need this room. Because there's already the money sent to them is already there, paid for. We just need a time and date to use it. Can we start there?
So what's our action item? Tia, I'm passing the baton over to you to take over the rest of the meeting. And we're gonna be short because I have to see the vice presidential debate tonight. In other words, another another episode of Saturday Night Live cuz I already know it's gonna be interesting.
So can, may I ask you a question? I just wanna. I just wanna go back in in address um with um Sister April, just so eloquently expressed. Two sisters, with those individuals who are in those safe houses or in those shelters at the time. And then um it's time to leave. What what are we doing to make certain that they don't go back through the vicious cycle of domestic violence?
Well, Lisa, we can't, we can't be certain that they won't. But if 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 we have these safe houses and transitional houses and their programs within the organization. Again, my my goal is that when Angel's Haven open. Is that in order for you to have space in this place, you have to agree, one, for counseling. Two, that you are gonna put yourself in a in a position where you understand the importance of self-love. That you won't wanna go back to abuse. But we have to educate the individual there, why they're there. I mean, that not, we can't, well, there's no guarantee they're not gonna go back. Because for me, I'm gonna be honest with you, I went back seven times. It wasn't just a statistic. I went back seven ti- but you know why? Because the first time, nobody helped me. The second time, nobody helped me. The third time, I didn't have nobody to talk to. The fourth time, I didn't have, I didn't know what counseling was back in the eighties. The fifth time, I I was afraid to 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 uh to not go back cuz I was being threatened. The sixth time, you know, I didn't know Jesus. Well, by the seventh time, I had people behind me. I had heard Carolyn, I had heard Lisa, your story, your sister's story, and I understood I wasn't the only one.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're giving them.
Oh, yeah, we had, that 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 is, and for me, I can't speak for everybody on the line. But it is a must that if I help you, that you have to agree, not just mouth, say I'm going. You have to, I have to physically see that you are getting the help and that you are putting in the work. So that, because again, I can't make you not go back. I can give you the tools so you cannot want to go back. You have to, you have to change the mindset. We have the unlearned behavior in order for us to want better for ourselves, but if we don't know better, we can't do better. Just getting out does not help because you know why? We're gonna yearn for something. I I was saying, I I was married for umpteen years. And then when I left, now I'm single. I didn't know how to survive single. So we have to teach them survival, single. And we have to teach peace. Because we've been in toxic, chaotic situations for so long, we don't know how to operate with peace and quiet and love. We have to be taught. And so if we don't teach it, then then nine times out of ten, we're gonna go back.
Oh, absolutely. I I I just wanted to make certain that we are giving them something other just, you know, than just. Oh, absolutely. I I I just wanted to make certain that we are giving them something other just, you know, than just I mean, no, that's that's just the same as if you, if you, you put someone in the penal system and they are not rehabilitated. They're just sitting penal system. They, you know, they are at one point released to maybe go back. We hope not, and you know, into that same behavior, but we, you know, we have to give people something, you know, we have to give them hope. We have to give them um the tools that they need. Um I certainly needed the tools. I didn't even know what the tools was until my sister here, Queen of B, I love you, girl. Until I, you know, sought help. Um and the type of help that I need, because oftentimes, I didn't even know this, we need specialized help for the circumstances that we've lived through. Um you know, a regular therapist not help me or you or someone else. Honestly, I didn't get the help that I needed until I came into contact with Queen of B.
Right, because we don't know how to function in healthy relationships, because we've been in unhealthy relationships all of our lives. When we get in a in a that's healthy, we we get the calls and the chaos because we don't know how to survive without it. So we have to be taught, and you know, I agree, we we need the tools in order to stay out of a domestic violence situation and relationship.
Sure, thank you.
I'm glad you said that. One of the things we'd like to offer for any of the domestic violence, the voices, the advocates, the speakers, is during the month, this month of October, every Thursday, after this Thursday, we'll be hosting um the Love Talk, Leaving Our Violence Every Day. We'd like to offer you all a platform, I think it's three weeks, two or three weeks. We want to talk about whatever subject is on your heart, and that would be your entire segment, that would be your night. And we would um have the flyer that we have, but your picture would be on, and you would be the host for tonight. This would be your party, this would be your night. You would invite your guests, you would have your theme. Um some of the topics we definitely want to talk about is the impact of the family. We want to talk about youth and domestic violence. We want to talk about, of course, the basic one-on-one um of domestic intimate violence. We want to talk about how to help a good friend or someone you love leave an unhealthy relationship. Those are just some of the topics that I had in mind. But we would like to offer any of the advocates that have a a voice, to let their voice shine, we would promote it. Uh we would put it out there, there's not a cause, it's not like that, we just want you to have an opportunity to share your story and get it out, and also to bring certain guests or people that you'd like to come on, if you'd like that. And we would just invite the village to be a part. So if any of you all are interested in that, and having one of those Thursday nights, please let us know. And uh we would go forward with that. Yeah, I just wanted to put that out there.
No, I'm happy to also offer my platform, my shift podcast, to um anyone who would like to come on, or we can come on collectively as um as a team, um and discuss um subjects um around domestic violence. Um if you all would like at any time, so you can just let me know.
And I ditto that. Anybody who wants to come on any last Saturday and uh any last Saturday of any month at six o'clock, um we have a Zoom. If if you guys want to present or tell your story or be a speaker, any last Saturday at six P M, you are more than welcome to take over. I would welcome not saying anything.
I need somebody else to speak.
Yes, please. So any last, and and unless it is, you know, Christmas or holiday, but I typically will move it if a holiday falls on the last Saturday. But it is the last Saturday of each month at six P M. Even if I have a speaker, you guys are welcome to join and come on and speak and tell your testimony, because I think we talked about it earlier. The more we tell our story, the more people are saying that they are not the only ones. And then they will try to get the help, because they see I'm not by myself in this, or hey, she went through it, and she don't look like what she's been through. You know, and so I think the more, and Lisa, you said it, the more transparent we are, the more we come together in unity as one, the more more people will will want to talk and share, and more the more people know what domestic violence is or spousal abuse. You know, we're not even talking about the same sex stuff. They're going through the same situations that we are. It's a lot more violent there, because they are already in the isolated shameful situation. And then on top of, you know, their same-sex situation, now I'm being abused. You know, and they don't want to tell anybody, because, you know, they they are ashamed of what somebody's going to say in 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 pointing fingers because they're gay. So what? Jesus hung out with the prostitutes.
My Sister April, I know, so over here, I am, Coles has had her hand up for a really long time.
Hey, I'm sorry.
Coles, you had something to say? I'm so sorry.
Um I've just been sitting listening. Um I'm a domestic violence survivor. Um and I was in the church the whole time. And a lot of churches are really not prepared to really deal with domestic violence. My experience was when I was dealing with it, I went to my church leader, and they made the matter even worse. Um instead of taking him in and continuing and working with him, because he was in the men's ministry, they put him out, which put me in harm's way. Um I'm not in that relationship anymore, but follow-up is so key. Because even today, I deal with it, I'm being very honest. Not the the violence part of it, but like where I am now, it's a reminder, every day I walk through my door, how I ended up here. Um I'm at peace now, but the reality is it was because of that. It cost me everything, forty years of my life, I lost my home, um. The system let me down. Um at the time, I was a caregiver for my father, and I had to make a choice. You know, they said, well, we could put you up for two, three days, but my father couldn't come. I I and it's stuff like that we got to deal with. Um today, I help men and women. Because it it's really real, follow-up is key. Um developing a trust with people, and as someone said earlier, sometimes, some folks won't get out of it, but they just need a place to come and talk to, and you know, not hear it over the pulpit of just being honest. Not not being judged. Um and there is a very, very few services out here for what? For domestic violence. You know, sometimes the mental is worse than the physical, if we really want to be honest about it. You know, so when we talk about doing programs, we need programs that's gonna really be in-depth and be willing to really carry that person as long as the need to be. You know, that's all I have to say.
Agree with you, agree.
Thank you for the transparency, I appreciate that. That's the only way we're gonna win, is knowing the truth and the whole truth. So we thank you, Sister Anne.
April, I had a question for you. Um how do people get in touch with getting the Zoom information? Do they email you, go to your website?
Oh, it's on the website, it's on Instagram, I always post it everywhere. Yeah, I it's all over Sister for Sister, the Purple Page. Um it's on um my Instagram, it's on my Facebook, my personal page, and and you know, and the um and Angels Haven. Um but any, you call me, text me, I'm all, I don't never turn my phone off, because um I'm I'm on duty, and I just want to make sure that I don't miss a phone call and I don't miss an opportunity. I promise, I promise Jesus, that if he got me out alive, I would spend the rest of my life helping anybody who needed to be helped. And so I've I've promised the Lord that, you know, that I would sacrifice my time um for those in need. But anytime, um it's on my social media, I always share it on um Sister Carolyn's page. And so it's always on Sister for Sister, the Purple Page, Pink Pink Page. Um it's on my social media, it's on my website, um under Up and Coming Events. Um it's there, it is, it the the password and the, it never changes. It's always the same, so once you have it once, you can always log into the same information. Um I and that's why I left it that way.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And and we are, I think Sister Carolyn went out, but um our organization is gonna honor uh Sister Carolyn um this year and give her our first Love Shouldn't Hurt Award. So we will be honoring her for all her sacrifice and all her work um on October nineteenth at twelve o'clock. Um we're gonna be honoring uh Sister Carolyn with our first award. Um so if you guys are available, uh feel free to to come on out and have brunch with us as we honor Sister Carolyn, October nineteenth.
Well, that's my birthday. And I'm on a panel that morning, so. I was, I was like, Tag, I'm on a panel that morning. So I won't be able to, but I I'm so excited for her. She is so deserving of that award. Most definitely deserving. I want to thank each and every, I don't know, Carol, do you have anything to say before I close this out?
I want to thank April for such an honor. Y'all pray for me, I want to definitely be in the house. But most of all, I want to thank you all, you 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 all are bad mama jammers, but you all are courageous and dedicated. It takes a lot to do this work, and you all know that it does. Because it's not easy seeing a woman, a man, children, family hurting and broken, and all you can do is a little bit, but just know your little bit means a whole lot. To know that someone cares. Thank you all for sacrificing your time, your talent, your treasures. And I mean, and I mean that from my heart to yours, I see you. I pray for you all, pray that you all remain encouraged and stay on assignment and lean on one another to help you. Some days you may not have it, so you may have to call Sister Tia, you may have to call Sister Lisa. You may have to call Sister Kathy, you may have to call April and Mary. You may have to call your sister and say, girl, I got this client, Ann, what should I do about this? You have any thought? She may have your answer, but at least she'll give you a safe space. Because we all know what this is like, more than anyone else. Many people talk about it, but when you walk it out the way you all have all have done, and I've seen you do it, then it really means a lot to have this unity and camaraderie and no competition allowed, because it's too exhausting. We have too many wars to win outside of this circle. We don't need to fight one another over nothing, because we s- we're supposed to be about love, leaving out the violence every day. So I want to thank you all, thank you, Sister Tia, thank you for everybody that's been on this town hall meeting. Mary, were you raising your hand in the air?
Yes, I just want to, um there's a, there's a uh message in the tat- in the chat from Sisters on Deck, Frida? It says, hi, family, as I listen to y'all talk, don't forget about my children, because they are hurting as well. On all levels, we must pay attention to them like never before. The handwriting is on the wall. So I'm not sure what's going on there, but I thought maybe you should see that.
Yeah, I was gonna read that, but thank you. I thought I was doing something else, thank you.
Yeah, I think we addressed that, she may have come on, like definitely addressed it. Um talking about how we need to start in the schools um sharing about boundaries and um healthy relationships and making sure we got some type of um programs um in the schools. I think Sister Lisa and Queen um were uh going out in the community on a regular basis, talking to the children, talking to the community about it. Um and so i- it's a definitely um something that we are trying to address. Um for twenty twenty-five, I would love for a teenager to come on that our 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 monthly and and talk about it, even if they talk off camera, um to talk about what teens want to talk about, as far as the bullying and the abuse um that's going on in their home and or even happening to them. You know, we gotta get the children to to start talking about it. They talk about everything else. So if we give them the platform, they gotta know that it's okay, you know, to share and talk and be transparent. A lot of children haven't been taught that, and we don't have to start representing truth. Not just come, you know, speaking your truth and living your truth, but just being truthful about life. And that includes abuse, sexual abuse, or or whatever it is going on in the home and in the schools. I agree, we we definitely gotta get the children involved, and the only way to do that is get them involved.
Tia and team, that's a good point, April, thank you. Before I go, I do want to have an action item that we can address, because these meetings for me are very frustrating in the past, but we are doing things very different. What's the action item for this time, this session? Are we gonna work with the church piece, or what's the action item, ladies, that we will be, what's our assignment? I'll be waiting.
I I hope that it could be, we're writing letters to or emailing our heads, our heads of our churches individually about talking about domestic violence and or setting some funds aside um to a designated, I guess we need to come up with a location where they can send monies to. And also, we need to get that hotel um established to find out what are the steps in order to have monies sent to them, and what are the steps that we take to call the hotel to say, hey, we have an individual, how can we get that money to them? How do we set up that fund at a hotel or several hotels? Um so the churches or organizations um can send the money to. So I think that should be one of the the action items is to, one, designate um the hotel, talk to the hotel management to find out how do we set up that fund. At that point, we can go back to the church and say, or an organization to be that sponsor or donate the money to this. So I think those are two action items that we should move forward um in for 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 this week.
Well, we have, we've worked with hotels, we have a hotel that we work with regularly, so we know how the conversation may need to go. But I want to make sure, and I think that's great, but I want to hear from some of the other um E Ds and leaders of your organizations, is this action item in alignment with your mission and your vision? And if so, um not just our church, some of us have minister friends um and reverends and pastors, I'd like for us to open that net and get them involved as well. And maybe someone can help put together the letter or one pager um to get them to get involved. And um they may be able to do a church, I mean, a hotel in their area. Lisa, some of the others that are on um for this action item, does that work in alignment with your uh organization's mission and and goals?
Sure, uh but I I I would like to say, why, why do we have to? I don't think we should just stop with our churches. I think we could send a letter collaboratively to all of the churches within Prince George's County.
Okay, that works for me.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to work on a list of the churches to, you know, give it a first, um you know.
Well, I think if the letter, we can just start emailing, it's just a copy and paste.
April, and then Lisa, would you like to work on April, work on a letter, Lisa, you gather the churches?
Sure, I can start trying to gather the churches within um Prince George's County. I don't, I don't think we should just start, you know, stop with our individual, um you know, houses of worship. I don't think we should just start, you know, stop with our individual, um, you know, houses of worship.
I have this somewhere. I don't know how, I don't know how old, old it is, but I do have a list of churches, so I can, we can, we can work on that together. How about that? You and I work on that together. Who would like, and I'm writing down, who would like to work with Lisa on the letter?
I don't know. I didn't know I was working on the letter.
I meant Lisa, I'm, I'm writing it down. You and me. And then April, um, who would like?
Work for me, cause I, you know, I'm, I talk a lot, but I don't always write it correctly.
That's okay. You can, it's, that's why we're.
I'm happy, I'm happy to help with that, sure.
Okay.
We can, listen, okay. But you're doing something. We got, we got other people online. And we're working as a collective, but I'm just saying, everybody can just, if they're all in agreement to work together, as we talked about all night.
Lisa, you can have my contact, so just, just, we can set some time aside.
Yeah, sure.
Churches. Um, anybody else? Yes, no? Grab a hold your piece. Alright. Well, wonderful.
Well, this is kind of blessing, and Carolyn, thank you again um, for always um, getting us together. Um, so that we can discuss this epidemic that's been going on since the beginning of time. And so Carolyn, I just wanna thank you personally um, for all that you do and all that you continue to do. Uh, I believe in giving us each other our flowers now. Can't do nothing, as my granny would say, when we gone. I wanna say them now, so Carolyn and everybody, every person who took time out, um, just to be in attendance tonight. God bless you for your faithfulness and for all that you do, even just being, you know, a witness to something. You were witnessed for a reason, because the next time you see that individual, or if it happens again, now you have the tools in order to move forward. So again, ladies, I, I applaud you, even if you didn't speak up to me. God knows what you're doing. God sees you. God bless you just for attending tonight, because I know that I was blessed and had, and information was shared with me tonight that would help me move forward in what I'm doing. So I just wanna thank each lady tonight for, for taking the time out, because time is valuable. That's something that we can get back. Can't get time back, you know, and so I appreciate you all. And Carolyn, I just thank you for all that you do.
Oh, God, it's all to God be all the glory. Thank you, April. And that goes back to everyone else. You all are doing an amazing job, and I wanna make a commitment that I am going to get at least ten churches. I'm gonna make a pledge. Ten churches to donate something for the hotel slash transportation um, for those survivors. Yeah, I'm good. And, and please, I wanna work with the marketing. I'll, I'll do a lot of the marketing. So whenever those letters are ready, I will be sharing with you all where to send them. I'll call the pastors and we'll send them, and this will be nationwide as well, but we'll start locally, D M V. So thank you all for everything. Um, that's all I just wanted to share.
Oversea Ryan, can, can, I know that I had you, I had your number before. Can you put your number, or Carolyn, can you, can I send you, can you send me her number or can somehow oversee? Uh, Coles, I keep saying Ryan. Lord have mercy. Um, I'm gonna give you my number to give to her, so that we can, I, I would like to talk to you about the, uh, the church piece.
Give me her number.
Okay, amen.
Um, I wanna, I just wanna ask if we can just take a moment um, to lift our sister Queen in prayer.
Mm-hmm.
Queen, you know, we love you. You know how we feel about you. Um, and I'm really, really saddened of what you're going through at this time, but just know that you're loved and um, we're continuing to lift you in prayer.
Most definitely.
Amen, amen, amen. I pray for her and I pray for all of us, cause every time we hear of another case, sometimes they trigger and they hit us differently.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And then the trigger brings us all the way back to where we first felt the deepest pain about this situation that touched us the greatest. So I agree, and I wanna incorporate, not right this second, cause my head is spinning, but I want us to have some kind of therapy once, at least every other month or every quarter, every, every advocate, every frontline, talk to somebody, and we wanna incorporate that in what we do to have someone that you all are assigned to talk to bi-monthly or quarterly, because it's necessary. It's important. Cause the on-the-job stressors, it's, I can't explain it. It mounts up. And that's why honestly, I'm having some of my challenges is because I allow things to pile up so high for so long until it broke down my physical body. We won't be allowing that for these frontline soldiers with this domestic and sexual violence. We're gonna be your sisters and your accountability. Thank you, Tia, for always trying to be my accountability partner. But reminding each other to get the care, mental, emotional, spiritual, that we need is so important. And I'm finished talking to you.
And she just cut herself right on the, but we're gonna have prayer. We're gonna pray out before we leave tonight. Um, Oversea Ryan, would you mind leading us in prayer tonight? Praying us out? Dr. Coles, I don't know why I keep, I have to write it down. Dr. Coles, would you mind praying us out?
Okay. Dear heavenly Father, first, we, we thank you for this day. We, we thank you for watching over us throughout the day, Lord. Now, Lord, you know the situations that are everyone's dealing with, Lord. We, we thank you for the love that is being shown towards one another. But we thank you for empowering us even through our situations to be able to reach out to someone. Lord, we ask a special blessing over Queen Alfie, Lord, the situation you know that's being going on. And Lord, as we move further, Lord, first, keep the spirit of unity. Keep us together. Be, be with us. Let us hold each other's arm up, Lord. Lord, we ask you to bring the resources where we're able to be more effective for other people, Lord. And Lord, as we get ready to lay our heads down tonight, we ask you to continue to give us the spirit of peace, the spirit of joy. But I ask a special blessing on Sister Carolyn, that she continuously go forth and she, she pours out to everyone, Lord. I ask you to strengthen her body, Lord, and be in her household, Lord. Be, be in the household of all those that are standing here, Lord. Continue to protect those, Lord, that are scared to come forth, Lord. Leave them in a direction where they can have help, Lord. We just thank you. We appreciate you. We even ask you to forgive us for any of our sins that we may have committed knowingly and even unknowingly. Lord, just continue to whisper in our ear gates. Continue to touch our hearts and spirits, Lord. Be with us as we go out into the street. Be with us as we deal with the different cases, Lord. Continue to show us the direction that you would have us to go. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen, amen. Amen. Thank you, ladies, for taking time out. Enjoy your evening. Um, be at peace. Love you all. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.